This program is brought to you as a public service by Maui Causes. Maui Causes is a crowdfunded media production group that provides media production services to a variety of environmental and progressive causes here in Maui County. Visit us on the web at www MauiCauses.org.
Welcome to another edition of Maui Causes. I'm Sam Small. In the studio is Sleepy John and Todd Swan, pressing the buttons, making things happen here in the studios provided by Akaku. God bless Akaku for providing this valuable community service. They need to be protected. The powers that be that don't like the things that the public has to say, they only like the things that the corporations like. Well, they've, you know, tried many times to shut Akaku down. They want to take this voice away from the community. They don't want you to be able to access the kind of information that we try to bring you on this show. Maui Causes is dedicated to be a positive disruption to the status quo. That is a necessary ingredient in a free democracy because as time goes on, any political system, any architecture, any structure will be perverted by big money interests. It's just what happens. And Maui County is at the end of a long, long cycle of corporate control, started with the plantation movement way before what's going on on the mainland in the United States. The rest of America is only just beginning to wake up to the fact that corporations have taken control of our government and our social system and that they are skewing everything to their short-term profit interests. Wall Street interests are running the show at all levels. Well, that's been going on for 125 years here in Hawaii. We are, as usual, Hawaii is way ahead of the rest of the nation. And we are part of an uprising. In 2014, the Shaka movement proved for the first time that Maui community has what it takes to bring itself together and put a ballot initiative on in for the election that went around the county council. We had a desire, the community had a desire for change. The community had a desire to protect itself from Monsanto's open-field chemical testing. It's an experimental process that they engage in upwind from where you live. It's still going on today. Even though we won that election, that was overturned in the courts. They used the court system against us. They think that you have no authority over what goes on upwind from where you live. That's the way they have the system rigged. Well, we created a movement in 2014 that, in this case, has evolved into Maui Causes. Vote Yes Maui is one of the vehicles that I was fortunate, honored to promote during the 2014 election. And Vote Yes Maui became Maui Causes. And we have been, I think we're up to our 67th show here on Akaku. And you can find us also at MauiCauses.org and on Facebook. We invite you to check out the content because it's presenting to this community a lot of stuff that you're just not going to hear anyplace else. This is not going to be in the Maui news. They don't really, you know, invite change. And we are all about generating change. So my apologies to the powers that be, but we are here to shake things up in a constructive, positive way, except when there's corruption. If you want to piss me off, show me where the system is rigged and corruption happens on a regular basis. And, you know, we've been doing research and can show you how that corruption is manifest in our system. Councilmember Ellie Cochran invited me to give a presentation to her Infrastructure and Environment Committee. They asked me to do 15 minutes. I spoke for 40 minutes about three-lot or less deferral agreements, two-lot or less exemptions that allow developers to completely skirt federal guidelines and infrastructure improvements that protect the environment. They don't have to pay roadway improvements. So you have a $6 million home on a beachfront property with a developer who's looking to build it and flip it, and they don't make any contributions to the community. The developers get off scot-free and you end up paying the bills that they should be responsible for. There are loopholes in our planning system. They are facilitated by the Planning Commission. The Planning Director, Public Works Director have an inappropriate level of authority. The county council has no oversight on what these people do. And they have been manipulating the system for decades. And it's gone on long enough now that we have the documentation to prove it. So happy to give that presentation to the county council. And there are more presentations to be made, similarly manipulations of the shoreline or special management area SMA permits. SMA majors require a full environmental assessments, full community impact discussion over what's going to go on in that property. But if you get an SMA minor, you don't have to do any of that. And if you submit fraudulent engineering numbers so that you're below the threshold to get an SMA minor, there is no oversight for anybody to know that the numbers that were submitted were fraudulent. That is a massive loophole in the county system. It can be easily fixed, and we are doing everything that we can to draw attention to this important matter. Please go to MauiCauses.org and take a look at show number 64. Look for our weekly shows. And show number 64 is my 40-minute presentation to Ellie Cochran's Infrastructure and Environmental Committee, which begs for follow-up. It begs for independent corporate counsel so that the county council does not have to rely on the legal opinions coming from the mayor's lawyers. We voted for that in 2016. It was a charter amendment. And Councilmember White has blocked the use of that amendment at every opportunity. He has not allowed the council to get independent lawyers on issues that affect you and our environment. That is the current way that our county government is being run, and they are running it into the ground. And only you and your participation in the electoral process can change this. We have candidates that have come up through, you know, because of the inspiration of the community in 2014. In 2016, it's growing. We're able to get candidates and able to get council members on the county council that do have an eye towards protecting the environment. They do understand the future of Maui relies on smart growth. You can't shut down all growth. That's not appropriate. But you have to have structured and appropriate growth. And we don't have that now. Right now, it is absolute free playground where developers get to do almost anything they want, especially in these smaller projects that just fly under the radar. Happens in so many, there are thousands of them, thousands of shoreline homes that have been developed where no environmental protections have been installed. Oluwalu is a perfect example of it. 10 years later, the developer was forced to come back only because a citizen stepped forward and filed a lawsuit. The county did nothing. They don't do anything. They think their job is to not restrict developers from developing. And that's not in your best interest. It's not in the best interests of your family and your children. And it needs to stop. And only you voting, participating in the electoral process, registering to vote, only you can change this. So with us moving into the electoral season, we have begun to invite onto the show candidates that are running for county council who, you know, we want to know what their intentions are. Do they have an interest in perpetuating the existing system? Or do they have an interest in honest change? And I think this guy has an interest in honest change. I'd like to introduce you to Gabriel Johnson. He's a resident of Lanai. And Gabriel is running in the county council race to represent the district of Lanai and represent Maui County at large as well. Gabe, thank you so much for joining us here today.
Thanks for having me, Sam. And congratulations on, what number is this show? 67?
67. I think this should be Maui Causes 67.
Right on. Yeah. Yeah, so good. That's, you know, that's obviously there's a need for, you know, a grassroots voice. So thanks for doing all that hard work.
Sure.
So yeah, you said a lot. I love your intros because there's so much that we could talk about. We could do a whole hour show on just what you said. But I guess the thing I want to add to that is, you know, there are, there's one problem that is glaring to me as you're talking about that is that we, we don't have a government that is pro-people. It's more pro-business.
Yep.
You know, it just looks at like the business as, oh, you guys are the job creators, so we'll let you guys do anything you like. But in reality, they, the people are like waiting for the government to come step up and help them. But it hasn't been like that. It's almost like we've been unheard and not listened to for so long.
So long.
That is, you get a very low voter turnout and people start getting frustrated.
They're disenfranchised.
They're disenfranchised. And next thing you know, the same old folks keep getting elected.
Right.
And then there's this hopelessness set in. And that's just, I think, the way you solve that is you motivate people with fresh new ideas. You know, I'm not a traditional politician, but I think I have fresh new ideas. I'm a new face. I'm a not, I don't come from the established section. I've been more of a grassroots guy myself. I've done a lot of work with helping out people with disabilities. I've done some things with the environment. My career is in, you know, conservation. So I think that it's time for a change. And just to remind everybody, everybody in the county can vote, even though I live on Lanai. So everybody in the county can vote on the seat of Lanai.
And that is a very important point to make, and I appreciate you saying that because people just don't know. We have a number, when you go in to vote, there's nine districts and there's a checkmark, you know, for each one of those districts. And though you live in one of those districts, you are entitled, and it is your kuliana, it's your responsibility to vote in all of those districts. We have a tremendous percentage, a really high percentage, way too high. It shows us that we have a lot of public education that needs to be done. It's not just getting people to vote, that we need to teach our community how to vote correctly so that their vote has its maximum value.
Exactly.
Empty checkboxes don't do anything.
You came to the polls, you might as well fill out the whole form.
We did a slogan. We're going to have to, and literally, I mean, this is what Maui Causes is dedicated to, is, you know, finding intelligent ways to engage the community and educate the community. And, you know, filling out those checkboxes is one of those things. This is not your first campaign.
That's right.
You ran two years ago in 2016. What did you learn through this process?
All right, so a little reflective time here. When I went back, when I think back to the 2016 election, the first thing I remember is the call that I got from Uncle Alika Atai. He called me up. I was sitting on the beach, Polihua Beach, north shore of Lanai. I was fishing, minding my own business, and I got this call from this guy I had never spoken with. You know, I knew him from the newspapers and I knew him as a community activist. And he says, hey, you're Gabe Johnson, and I just want to let you know that we vetted you, we looked into your past, and we think you'd be a viable candidate. We want you to run against Ricky O'Clamoe. We like what you did with your, I was the County Commissioner on Americans with Disabilities Act, you know, trying to get, trying to help the Kupunas have, you know, parking stalls for them and, you know, the wheelchair and the ramps and the, you know, restrooms and getting them all set up for people with disabilities.
That's good advocacy work.
You know, we have a really low employment rate of people with disabilities, one of the worst in the nation. So I was really trying to get jobs for people with disabilities. So he said, I liked what you did there. And then I also did a lot of work with trying to set up a community-based subsistence fishing area, CBSFA. That's a big word. But basically trying to make the people who fish and the people who gather, let them have a say in how the rules are made. They know, because they're the cultural practitioners.
Right.
They know what happens with the fish.
The mokus.
Right, the mokus. So he said, I like what you do. Would you be willing to throw your name in the hat? And I, you know, this is a call you're not used to. And I was like, okay, well, give me some time to just think about this. And he goes, well, there's one problem. I said, what's that? He goes, you gotta tell me by tomorrow. The date is Monday is the...
That was the deadline.
And I said, oh, God. So I just threw out, I had my fishing poles, you know, I was fishing for a luau, got the cowbell up. And I was thinking about it, thinking about it, middle of the night, all of a sudden the cowbell rings, bingalingaling, you know, and I got a big fish on and I was fighting this big fish.
Oh, wow.
Big alua. And I was watching all the line go out and he's spooling me. So it was a really big, 100-plus pounder.
Oh, boy.
And all of a sudden, the line snapped. I lost the fish. I sat down in the sand, sweaty and mad and 3:00 in the morning, whatever. And I went back to my truck and then I just, you know, respooled my line, rehooked the bait and threw it back out. And I kept thinking about what was going on, but I was so excited. But I said, you know, that speaks to me the tenacity of people, that, you know, you can lose something or you can fight for something, and if you lose, you just get back up, just to sand off.
Absolutely.
You get back up there and you go throughout the poll again.
Right.
So here I am, 2018. I lost last election, but here I am. I'm going to throw out my poll and hopefully people will understand my message and I can motivate them enough to go out to the polls and try to get people elected who are just like you. You know, I'm a single dad, working-class guy, taking care of my kids, just trying to, you know, make a living. I'm not trying to, you know, get into politics so I can, you know...
Score.
Get, yeah. You know, it's just a matter of, hey, I'm tired of not being listened to and I think I've got some fresh new ideas. So I want to motivate the electorate and hopefully we can get, you know, get me in and we can do things that are not business-oriented, more people-oriented. You know, we got to take the profits out of, out of government. You know, this constant, we got to make profits, you know, for these business class people. You know, no one, there are very few politicians will talk about that you're making enough profits, let's take some of those profits and give it to the people. Let's do things that are...
Balanced. It's got to be, you have to find that delicate balance.
Right, right.
And the pendulum has swung way too far.
Exactly, exactly.
The people are very much underrepresented here. And it goes towards, you know, 125 years of colonial, you know, domination. This is an oppressed society.
Right.
And people have been living under that oppression for so long that they think it's normal. And that's one of the things that we, you know, constantly harp on in this show, is that what's taking place in Maui County is not normal.
Right.
This is not the way it's supposed to be. And it doesn't have to stay this way. We can make a difference through social media and electronic journalism and these different vehicles that we're able to bring these messages to the public in a way that never existed before. And so we have opportunities here with the, that have never existed before. Even this, you know, coming campaign in 2018, we have for the very first time in Hawaii, same-day voting.
Yeah.
And nobody knows how that is going to impact, you know, the process. We have absentee ballot system that has been enhanced, that's giving the community a better opportunity.
Well, it's about, you know, making, making people able to vote easier.
Yeah.
You know, like there's a very sneaky way to, to keep the, keep those in power, to stay in power, is just to make it hard for you to vote.
Right.
You know, they, so that happens a lot on the mainland. I think here with this, that's a great law that we're going to have where it's same-day voter and, you know, mail-in your votes and that, I think...
You can go online and register for permanent absentee ballot so that your, your election ballot will come to you in the mail to whatever address, you know, you put into the system. So even if you're, you know, a primary resident here in Maui County, but you're not on the island, which a lot of people are, you know, Maui is their official residence, but they're not here all the time. They've got other, other places that they are. You can have that ballot mailed to you off the island. You can fill that ballot out and send that ballot back in in time. And then your vote counts. And you don't have, you, you can do that even if you live on Maui, you don't have to go to the polls that day.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's just, it comes to you in the mail. You fill it out and you send it back and you voted. You don't even have to show up at the polls on that day. So we're doing what we can to make it easier for people to, to vote and participate in that process. Please go to Maui, you know, whatever it is, MauiCounty.org, we'll put the number, the email on the screen, and register to vote. You can vote for a, you can register to receive an absentee ballot. You fill, get it in the mail, you mail it back, and you don't have to go to the polls that day.
We got to make civics accessible.
Yeah.
You know, and I know that in this day and age, we work, what, two jobs and we're busy with this and busy with that.
Everybody seems to be, yeah.
But your vote is still so important. I just make the time, you know, just make the time. It's so important to go out and vote because, you know, there's the expression, no vote, no grumble. You know, I understand that really, but also, on the flip side of the coin, let's get people who get the voters excited. You know, I don't want to go with the lesser two evils again. We did that 2016. You know, now we're going to try to get people who get excited about, you know, having a say in your voice. Every time I go door-to-door, a lot of people get frustrated because they feel they don't have a say in their government. You know, they, I go, I drive down to Waileku, I testify, and then they don't even listen. We're all in, we're all in agreement, the community's all in agreement for this thing or that thing.
Right.
And then the politicians just ignore and go the other way.
That's the way that it's been done.
That is, that is so frustrating.
And this past year, two years, has been tremendously frustrating because, you know, we have four candidates that are at least willing to have the dialogue and trying to press forward, you know, ideas and changes that the majority under Mike White consistently cut off these things at the knees.
Yeah.
Alika Atai has submitted over 20 different resolutions to the council for consideration, and Mike White has trashed every single one of them. They have been marginalized. They've even had their emails blocked.
I read about that, yeah.
You know, there are things going on here in Maui County government, the administration, and aspects of the county council that are probably illegal. You can't block the access of the email, the county email system to a county council member. It's absurd that you would even consider doing it. It's absurd that Mike White came up with a proposal that the council should be able to fire the executive assistants of anybody on the council. They have no right to say, you know, who a council member hires as their staff. That's, you, you voted for that person because you knew that they would hire a certain kind of person to be on their staff. And the other people that may have a different opinion on that council have absolutely no right. They have no right to even consider that they would have the right to fire someone else's executive assistant. That is absolutely absurd. And that is the level of manipulation and entitlement that they think that they have over our government. And that needs to change. And there are candidates who understand the difference that that makes in how your life will be affected long-term and how the environment here in Maui County will be affected long-term. And Gabe Johnson is one of those, is one of those people. We're going to take a short break and we'll be right back here on Maui Causes with Gabe Johnson. Thank you.
There's more to our show in just a moment. This program is brought to you as a public service by Maui Causes. Maui Causes is a crowdfunded media production group that provides media production services to a variety of environmental and progressive causes here in Maui County. Visit us on the web at www MauiCauses.org.
Welcome back to Maui Causes. We're here today with Gabriel Johnson, who is a county council candidate running in the district of Lanai. But as we said earlier, you know, you get, you don't have to live on Lanai to vote for Gabe Johnson. You get to check, there are nine districts, you get to check a box in all of those nine districts. We have way too many unchecked boxes here in Maui County. It needs to change so that your vote has its maximum impact. Are there hot-button issues? I mean, housing is, I can only imagine, is a big issue on Lanai.
Yeah. So housing is, I have a plan for affordable housing.
Good. We've had two years to think about it, so I'm glad that you do.
Yeah. And, you know, housing is an important thing. And I mentioned a little bit about taking the profits out of building houses because, you know, we, we can build a $3 million home and it'll sit empty. You know, there's plenty of districts you can look at, you know, on Lanai specifically, there's homes that have been built and no one has ever lived in them for years and years and years. And it's a flop. It's a drain on our economic system, you know.
Someone has built a multimillion-dollar oceanfront home and nobody wanted it.
Right. Because you're, you're approaching a certain type of customer. Obviously, not a working-class folks like ourselves, you know. But if you come to Lanai and you, it's your second or third summer home, we don't have a mall, we, you know, we don't have...
There's nothing for them to do.
If you like hunting and fishing, come on over to Lanai, you know. But it's, it's not like the Millionaire's Playground kind of thing that, I think, it kind of flopped when Mr. Murdoch and Castle Cook built all these, these things. It just, it wasn't, it is a round peg in a square hole kind of thing, you know.
Right, right. Which is very common. You know, the kinds of houses that developers like to build are not the kinds of houses we really need here in Maui County.
Right.
They're not appropriate for this environment.
The model that we should be focusing on is not the homes on the beaches and the second homeowners, but the model is Lanai city itself, the plantation town where it's small, working-class families living in small houses. You know, they all kind of look similar because that's how you make affordable homes affordable. You know, you don't have to have this gigantic house for $400,000 that the husband, the wife, and the grandma and the grandpa, everybody got to live, move in just to even afford a mortgage, you know.
And everybody's got to have a second job just to be able to meet the mortgage.
When, when you do that...
And that's a fallacy, you know, it's a problem in the low-income housing notion as well because, you know, you can, you can, you know, maybe if you're lucky, you can purchase a house with only 10% down, but that leaves you with a pretty high monthly mortgage that people have no ability to meet.
Right. So that kind of speaks to the housing initiative, the Affordable Housing Initiative Plan. And I kind of think that would be important is that we should start funding the nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity and start using land trusts.
Community land trusts.
Right. So you have the land being owned by a land trust and the house being built by a nonprofit.
Right.
That's going to cut your costs so much because you're not saying to a developer, I'll let you build 100 homes, but 30 of them have to be affordable. Those 70 homes are going to be market value, they're just trying to make money, you know. So the burden on them is like, ah, these, these 30 homes, we're not making any money. But if you ask Habitat for Humanity to do it, whose mission statement is not to make money off homes, there's no profit involved, it's a nonprofit.
Right.
That's when you can really get the class, the homes for working class. So it's just only one facet. Problem that a lot of people aren't talking about is how do you get the funds? Like you just said, the 10% down, that's a, that's a lot of money for working class. So we tend to go to the big banks that are, you know, big mainland banks and we say, hey, can we get a mortgage? I think the solution would be is, we have small credit unions that are throughout, there's one on Lanai, there's one on Molokai, there's, you know, rural districts have, have the credit unions and there's credit unions in almost every district.
Right.
So if the county went to the local credit unions and say, we're going to give you funds that you're going to loan to affordable housing people, that people need affordable housing, then you keep the money circulating within the communities that you're trying to do. And that is, so many times, the money that we, we generate gets taken out of state, keeps going out of state, or keeps going in other people's coffers. And the more money we keep localized, the, the better our, our economy gets stronger and stronger. So I think we should prop up the federal credit unions so that they can help our working-class folks get the mortgage, get the loans, and then that way we can solve that end of the, of the solution. There's a lot of, you know, it's pretty complicated, but there's...
It can be.
If we start giving these guys money to get a home and make the home cheap, then we're halfway there, you know, because when you get a home, when you become a homeowner, the positive effects ripple out like a, like a stone in the water.
Oh, absolutely.
When you're stuck in a house, like a 400-square-foot plantation home and you've got 10 people who live in them, all of the abuses come up. The spousal, the domestic abuse, the drug abuse, that's, all of the abuses rise. And that's something to be said about, I think it was Virginia Woolf, but somebody said, you get a room of one's own, you know, to have my own little place, my own little room, it's good for the soul. But when you're all jammed in and packed in like rats, you get vicious and, you know, tensions go on and...
Sure.
All the abuses come up. And then you get like, with the drug abuse, with the spousal abuse, with all the abuses, then, then you get into the homeless, the homeless factors, you know. So I think that if we start giving working-class people a fair, a fair shake at getting your house, then you can, then the, the whole community gets, gets better.
It stabilizes the community. It stabilizes the community.
So, if you have a stable community, just like you said, then you can get a job, and then you become part of the, you know, you can pay a little bit of your taxes, you know, goes, so it just generates, the larger the middle class, the more, the more of a stable economy we have.
Absolutely.
So, I think that's, that just helps everybody on so many levels. It's a lot of times, we, we kind of try to tell the people who, the haves, tell, if you help the have-nots, you in turn will be helped. You know, like, if you're owner, own a factory of widgets, if I can't buy your widgets, your factory's going to go out, you know.
Well, and it goes, you know, I mean, one of the most expensive aspects of our current culture is healthcare.
Right, right.
You know, there's strong data, Josh Green, who is running for lieutenant governor, has been speaking, you know, he's, he is a medical doctor, and he has the numbers, he's, he's worked out, you know, the clear evidence that if you take a homeless person who is using, they're sicker because they're homeless, they have no access to anything else other than the emergency room.
And that's the most expensive way to get healthcare.
And so, these people are getting their healthcare from the emergency room. If you literally give them a home, it changes the structure of their lives, they're no longer sick, and the money, it's less money to give them the home than it is to underwrite the emergency room healthcare that they're using.
Yeah.
You know, you just run the numbers, you know, stuff like that makes sense. But some people are like, "Oh, that's socialism, and you know, that's, you know, why should these people suck off society?" You know, there's this, there's this balance, you know. And, and, you know, we're just, you know, in a place here where the people's needs have been excluded for so long from our political system, that the politicians are so beholden to the corporate interests, the banks, the large landowners and the utilities, and even to some extent, the unions, that, that, you know, they, the, the whole system is rigged to ignore the public's real needs.
The irony of it is, is that we give the power to those folks when we could easily just turn around and take it back.
Take it back.
You know, it, I, I use this quote all the time, but there ain't no power like people power. You know, the people power, and the fact that you can go out and vote, and the fact that you can change your, who, your elected officials, it's, no, there's not many countries where else you can do that. You know, we should be able to be engaged in our, our local government. We should be able to have a say in what, in what goes on in, around our towns. So, I think that once we start questioning power, then we can realize that, "Hey, wait a second, we give you that, we give you that authority, if you don't do it right, then we're going to take it right back." You know, there's the public trust doctrine where we entrust the government to take care of the environment, and when they don't do it, then we got to call them and, you know, call them and question, say, "Why aren't you taking care of our land? Why are you doing these injection wells? Why are you pulling water from up country and giving it to A and B?" You know, that, I'm, I'm just one guy, but why, why isn't the government going after these guys, you know? So, that's, that's the thing, is, it's, the people will come to realize that we will waken up, and we are the ones that are really in control. If we just got to recognize that we're the ones that have the power. Because we, we allow you, we allow the government to do it in our name, and when they're not doing it in our name, we got to call them to task and bring them back.
Right. And that's, that's the significant deficiency that's been persistent in the county council for decades. There is nobody that has, that we have not had enough county council members who have the balls to stand up to the system and confront the system. And so, the system has just perpetuated. This, you know, past two years, we're, you know, since, since the 2017, you know, we've got this 5-4 split. And, you know, the majority is absolutely in support of the status quo. They're not allowing anything to change. And it has definitely been an uphill struggle. It's been, you know, the, the, the council members that do have a progressive notion are just been banging their heads against the wall. It's, and it's only by the, the community stepping up to support candidates such as yourself so that we can have a majority on the county council who have a mindset to protect the public interest, to protect the common good, protect the environment through the public trust doctrine, you know, to the, to the extent that, that it can be done.
Yeah. I think, I would add to that, is just, you know, we need the political will, the political will to do it. You know, a lot of times, the politicians can just hide behind and say, "Oh, well, that's, I'm only one guy, and there's only so much I can do." But I've seen politicians who work really hard for unpopular ideas amongst their peers, but with the people, Bernie Sanders being one example, you know, he, he got so many votes and so much, so much momentum just by talking our language, the common people's language, you know. And I think that's important, that we got to stop looking at like, "Well, these guys are, they've been a politician for 10 years, so they obviously know what they're doing."
Yeah, they know better.
Well, what has gotten, what has changed in those past 10 years? You know, politicians, the way I look at it is, politics should be, "What have you done for me lately?" kind of business. And if you're not, you know, you're either helping or you're hindering. If you're not helping me, then you're hindering me. So, we got to call them to task one time, when it's time.
And there's a lot of, you know, I've sat in on enough council sessions, you know, committee sessions, this is complicated stuff. We need council members that have the wherewithal and the, and the brain power to be able to understand what's being presented to them.
You know, I, I understand that when we're talking about real complicated things, democracy can be messy, right? You know, you can have a, but I don't think that we should be deter, like, you shouldn't be afraid of that. You know, I can disagree with a politician, or I can agree with them, but that's part of democracy. You got to have this robust debate, you got to have this back and forth, this give and take, and, you know...
And there needs to be structural elements in place to facilitate these things. So, for instance, we could have easily write a county ordinance that says, "You know what? If you become the chair of a committee, you've got 180 days to hire someone who has professional experience in that field to be your staff person."
Yeah, reference source, yeah.
You know, that is, we could easily do that. Some of these things are easily fixed. These permit things, you know, where a, an SMA minor permit gets submitted with clearly fraudulent numbers that bring it below the threshold so that they don't have to have any oversight, there are no inspections. We could easily fix that at the council level with a simple ordinance that mandated that Public Works hire an inspector. They hire a civil engineer, and that every permit application that comes into the system is checked and verified by the county's civil engineer. That is a simple hire, it's a simple fix that can take away that entire level of corruption, and it just hasn't happened.
If there's no willpower, or no political will to do it, then it's not going to change. So, if you're, if you're tired of it, then you got to go out and vote and get the people in who would like that.
And there's also, you know, we have the opportunity, what we did in 2014, because the county council refused, we did a public petition. So, you know, a number of these issues, the structural issues that, you know, a professional town manager, district voting even, as, you know, should there be nine districts? Or should there be, you know, three sets of three so that it's cheaper for a candidate? You got to spend, you know, you got to raise and spend a lot of money to be able to run your campaign across the entire island chain.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's, you got transportation between Lanaii and Molokai, you know, I mean, it's, it's, there are big issues at hand.
So, I took, a good example of that is I took the ferry over, and then I just took the bus to come here, you know, because it is expensive, and I, I do go door to door. It's kind of a grassroots campaign. But I, I think that going door to door for me is, really puts me in touch with the people that, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get their vote. I want to hear what your issue is. You know, I can tell you all my, all my things, but let's hear what you have to say.
Absolutely.
And the two things that always come up is, I just labeled it as payrolls and potholes. Those are the two things that when people want to talk to me when I go door to doors, "Why don't you fix this street that's in front of my house? There's a pothole you can't fix it. Why is the county never come and fix this thing?" And the other thing is, you know, "My payroll, I'm not making enough," or, "Why are you guys taxing me so high?" So, I think if, if I go door to door and I start hearing those things, then I formulate the ideas, I come up with the, the popular ideas, whereas most politicians these days, they don't do that. You know, they don't want to hear what you say. They, they just say, "Leave, you, we got your vote, now just come and see us two years later. Let us go and do our thing here."
Well, and or they're representing...
And keep us out of it.
Or they're representing business interests when, you know, you deal with, you know, minimum wage.
Yeah.
Is, is exactly that issue.
I'm a strong supporter of Fight for 15. I really believe that even the county cannot, you know, it's a state idea, it's in a state's purview to do the fight, to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour. But I think that if I got in, got elected, I would definitely advocate for that, because we, that's just the beginning. You know, let's talk about a livable wage, and, you know, this $10 an hour is just not cutting it. Let's be real, you know. What is a gallon of milk? $10 a gallon? You know, I'm going to work an hour to get a, a thing of milk. It's just pakapakashi, if you, it's just ridiculous, you know. So, that is, I've always been a strong supporter of the Fight for 15, trying to get our wages up, you know, our wages have to go up. And the cost of living has to go down, because we're just so far. You know, there's that famous graph of the, the profits that the corporations are making, and then the wages of the workers have been like this until Reaganomics came, and then the profits just kept going, but the wages just kind of leveled out.
Right.
And I'm, my mother was a single mom, she was a construction worker, a union worker. She raised me off of a, a union worker's wage. Nowadays, in this day and age, can that really happen? You know, can you really afford to live off of just one wage in, in this day and age? And yet, construction companies are making hand over fist. You know, the developers are making hand over fist. So, where, what happened? You know, was, I'm a child of the Reaganomics, and I'm telling you, since I was a kid, I've been told, "Big government's bad. The problem with this is the government." And here I am, "Well, okay, we gave Reaganomics how many years? 30 years of..."
Jellybean economics, right.
And, and it's not gotten any better. So, I'm, I'm calling humbug, man, I'm calling, "No." I'm not, it's not how it works.
The housing, housing is that way, public education is that way. There are, you know, a number of different studies that are floating around these days that clearly show that if we were to forgive the, the college loans, that the entire nation would be uplifted.
Yeah.
Because of that, that dragging debt that has been placed on these students.
When you get a college degree, you, that, your, your income will increase statistically, right? So...
That's the theory.
Right. So, why not have a, a big middle class that are taxpayers like the rest of us? It, it will help everybody, you know. And I think that that is, gets lost in the shuffle, you know, that we don't, we, we need to have kids come out with a four-year degree or a two-year degree and jump in the workforce and not have to just keep paying back the money to the loans and never get ahead in life. It's, you know, I have a 14-year-old daughter, and to convince her to go to college right now, we struggle back and forth. And then, what's, what can I say when I'm, "Oh, you should go to college, go to college, go to college." And then she says, "But I don't want to be in debt." As a father, I'm kind of like, "All right, you got yourself a point."
She's got a very, it's a good point.
It's a good point, so...
And there's a whole generation of, you know, that is coming up from a place where, you know, these, there's a lot of, you know, kids on Maui that are involved in organic farming, and they're, they're, they're here, you know, because of the lifestyle, and they're here because of the, the farming, the, the fruitfulness of, of the land that you really can, you know, have a successful, a small-scale farm and survive.
Yeah.
But they have, there's, they have absolutely no doubts that they're never going to own their own home.
Right.
They're never going to be able to make enough money to own their own home. So, they're, they've adopted that we can live in a community, we can be part of a community farm system and be self-sufficient and, and live off the land.
Yeah.
And it is changing the people's mindsets.
Yeah. Well, I'm all for, you know, localized farming. In fact, I've been on the waiting list to get a, get a little plot of land in our community gardens on Lanaii for over 10 years now.
Why is there such a long waiting?
It's just, that's, everybody wants, you know, to, we recognize that, "Why can't I grow, have a chicken coop with chickens and, and get my chickens from there, or my eggs from there?" When I have to go to the store and spend, you know, buy mainland chicken eggs. I can grow chickens, you know, or I can grow eggplant, or whatever I can grow, I can do it in my, in a community garden.
Right.
You know, and then you, you go to the store and you look at it, it says, you know, product of Mexico or product, how much does it cost for that stuff to get all the way out here when we could just grow it locally, you know? It's, my, my field is invasive species, and that's a whole nother point. But the fact that we import 90% of our food, along comes all the invasive species like the rat lungworm disease, and, you know, there was a skunk found in Honolulu the other day.
No, really?
It's like, because we're importing all of these things when we could simply grow them here, you know.
Sure. And, you know, even the public schools, you know, that, that, you know, the federal mandates for a school lunch program, you know, say that you need to be apples and oranges.
Yeah.
Well, why can't that be a banana and a papaya instead?
Exactly.
You know, and that it doesn't have to be imported, we can grow it here.
Right.
And, you know, those are the simple kinds of solutions that, you know, that, that, that are available to us. And, and we have council members, you know, who have that kind of mindset. You know, that's, that food program, that's one of the things that Alika, you know, Atai has been working on for a while. Our county bus system is something that came out of Alika Atai. You know, he was working with the Moku's, and they, they had these vans, and they were running the kids, they wanted to make sure that the, that the Hawaiian kids who lived up country had access to the ocean, because the Moku system is from ocean to, to hilltop. And so, they took it upon themselves to, to raise the money to operate, you know, these passenger vans. And they were, they were busing the kids from up country down to the ocean, and then taking the kids at the ocean and running them up country so that they could have an experience of their entire world, their entire, you know, environment. And they kept numbers, they kept records, and they were able to finally show that we have sufficient ridership, you know, here in Maui County to justify a bus system. And that was, you know, essentially the genesis and the foundation of the county's bus system, is the numbers that, that they generated riding those white vans.
Yeah. That's really important, that the community, or that the government gets involved in public transportation, you know. Simply doubling...
It is, it is the role of government. That is the role of government, that's what they're for.
Yeah. So, I don't know why we have this tendency to always want to privatize everything. You know, they, they constantly are backing out of their responsibilities, you know. It's, it's very important that I look at a transportation system as not as for profit. You know, it doesn't, everything is somehow tied to profits. When, when, when I want my government to provide me efficient transportation, it shouldn't be through a company that's a for-profit company, you know.
Well, one of the problems that, you know, certainly that we have here in Maui County is that we've had a political patronage system, so that we have a county department, but the county department has a director that's been appointed by the mayor, and that is a political patronage job. The mayor has been free to appoint directors who have absolutely no experience in their field. The director is supposed to be the most experienced person in the room, and we have directors who have no experience whatsoever. We even had, county council even had to, in terms of housing, county council had to hire an independent consultant to do the director's job because she doesn't have any experience to do the job that the mayor gave her the job to do. A professional town manager system would change that. And we do, you know, we do, that's the kind of thing that I think that we would, you need a public petition for, even in this election cycle for 2018, that we can, the public can drive a petition process so that we can change the, the charter and do whatever we need to do so that the, no mayor has the ability to hire directors that have no experience. Same thing, you know, if you become a chairperson, then your office is responsible for hiring somebody so that you have the, the appropriate resources, the knowledge base. This business of, of allowing inexperienced people to have high-paying, high-responsibility jobs in the county has to stop. Why? Because then the county does a lousy job. The department does a lousy job because they don't have a qualified director. And so, the solution becomes, "Well, we'll just give it to some private company because they're going to do a better job than the county does." And we can fix that system. These are the kind of systemic system changes that are really only going to come, you know, we'll be lucky if, you know, if you get on board and, and, and we have a set of council[1781.95] and we have a set of council members that are willing to step up and make these kind of system changes. You know, but as a community, I think we have a responsibility, and if we have the ability to, we have the right, we just need the person power as a grassroots organ, a community, you know, to come together and do this kind of thing. There's a new organization that's springing up called the Maui Pono Network. And is just beginning to organize around the notion of supporting candidates that, you know, are willing to have a balance in the system and change the structure of the system, the system change that is, that we need so desperately. So people can check that out. You can, you can go, there would be a Facebook presence just being created of Maui Pono Network. And grassroots organizing to, you know, perhaps bring petitions to the public so that the candidates know. It's, if we only leave it to candidates, we don't have here in Hawaii propositions. And there's even, there's even a movement, you know, to create on a statewide basis that we could, like California does, you know? Enough citizens get together, and you put something on the ballot. That mechanism doesn't exist at the state level. We have it at the county level, but it doesn't exist at the state level. That needs to change, to give the public more of a voice. And so we have an opportunity to organize as a community and come together and put these issues into a ballot initiative so that the council candidates have no choice but to address these issues. You know, you'll find that there are things that you want to talk about as a candidate that other candidates, they don't want to talk about it. You know, so they're just going to marginalize you as some kind of fruitcake. And if there's nobody in the room that forces them to address that issue, then they're going to get away with not addressing that issue. And the public won't know that their mindset is for the corporations. If we have a ballot initiative, if the public comes forward and can put energy into this kind of thing, then they'll have no choice but to address these issues. We get to control, the public gets to control the dialogue, not the candidates. And it's not just a popularity contest, it's issue-oriented.
That's important that you mention that it's issue-oriented because that's, with that comes like the idea of solutions, you know? And, because there's too many times that, I always get on them for saying, "Oh, we know, we're too scared to do that because we don't want to get sued," or don't want to, you know? Meanwhile, like, I'm using the example of like the ocean safety. You know, for some reason, as easy as it seems to me that we should have people, you know...
Lifeguards?
Lifeguards watching our oceans, they can't seem to get it done. You know, and I don't know why that is such a hard thing for them to understand, that people are actually dying, you know?
And that a protector, a lifeguard, doing that role and serving that purpose in the community deserves to be protected by the community. That those lifeguards have, aren't covered by any kind of liability insurance is an absolute absurd notion. You know, that's government's responsibility to be able to support those initiatives in an appropriate way so that the people can do those jobs and not get hurt. You shouldn't have to get hurt as a lifeguard if you save somebody's life.
Right, and the government should be there helping and protecting.
We haven't, you know, the bizarre thing is that, you know, county directors have errors and omissions insurance. So, I mean, that's why Pat Wong got hired by Alan Arikawa because the director screwed up, Alan screwed up at Sand Hills by allowing the developer to build these walls and allowing the developer to violate the county's own grading ordinances. And after the county screwed up and got sued because of it, they, Pat Wong was an insurance specialist. So he got hired so that he could try and get the county's insurance company to have to pay the bill because of the director's bad decisions. Error and omissions insurance should be used to cover the county's bad decision.
That speaks to me, that they'll spend money to cover their bad decision as opposed to fixing it the right, the first time.
Well, the Ejection Wells is absolute proof of that. We've spent millions of dollars defending a faulty program out of sheer arrogance. And it happens consistently. This is, you know, the administration invites lawsuits. As soon as a citizen having an issue with the county, having some difficulty, as soon as there's any hint that that person is likely to issue a lawsuit, corporation counsel issues a gag order and will not allow any county employee to talk to that person. So how do you even continue to resolve an issue that you might have with the county if the county employees are being instructed not to interact with you?
That's such a lose-money plan.
It's job security for the lawyers, that, you know, that's all it is.
Wow, yeah.
Gabe, I want to thank you so much for joining us here on the show today. Or, you know, as many ways as we can support you in the community, running for candidacy, to, you know, to be able to bring these kinds of changes into Maui County, we desperately need. And I want to thank you for, you know, every, it's not easy being a politician. You know, it changes people.
Yeah.
You know, that's part of the positive disruption, that the whole system needs to get churned every once in a while because people in the job, you know, end up, you know, changing over time.
Well, you know, I got that fire in my belly, you know? I'm just tired of not being heard. I'm tired of watching my children's future not go the way it should be, you know? So I'll throw my name in the hat because if, I'm not going to sit on the sidelines and just grumble about everything. I'm going to go in there and try to get on the field, put my helmet on.
Good, well, hopefully we will get the play.
All right, buddy.
Thank you all. Catch us again here on Maui Causes.
Thank you.
This program is brought to you as a public service by Maui Causes. Maui Causes is a crowdfunded media production group that provides media production services to a variety of environmental and progressive causes here in Maui County. Visit us on the web at www MauiCauses.org.